Council, we're on and recording, and I'll just let you know that the mayor's not going to be here tonight, so we can go ahead and start the work session. I guess to the extent we need a Mayor Pro Tem bill tonight to fill in, that'd be great, since that is the role you sit in. Probably for a work session, we really don't need one. And I'll turn it over to you if you want to just quickly get the meeting convened and started, and then we'll handle the three agenda items we have.
Welcome to the, I guess we're all set, are we David?
Yep, we're good.
Welcome to the April fifteenth, two thousand thirteen work session. Work sessions are a more informal setting to update the council on business items. No vote will be taken on work session items. Tonight, there are three items on the agenda. Public comment is allowed that is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you are required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk. Public comment will be allowed for a total of ten minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of each item. Once the item is called, no other public cards will be accepted. Are there any public comments for item number one?
There are not, sir.
Will the city clerk then sound the first agenda item, please?
Our first item this evening is discussion of fiscal two thousand thirteen mid-year budget adjustments. Ms. Stacy Inglis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Someone here. Well, as we do every year, this is a mid-year budget adjustment. This is basically just truing up everything based on activity to date and future projections that we have going on, that we anticipate for the rest of the year. The general fund is, of course, the main operating fund for the city. The revenue appropriation increase that we're requesting tonight is totals to three hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. And then a expenditure appropriation increase totals one point three million dollars, one million three hundred thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars. So we're anticipating taking nine hundred seven thousand one hundred sixty-seven dollars out of the fund balance. So let's talk about the fund balance a little bit. At the end of fiscal year two thousand twelve, the fund balance totaled ten point one million dollars. And that's a pretty healthy fund balance considering our policies require that we keep two months' worth of our operating budget in the fund balance, which totals up to about three point two million dollars. So we have a great amount there that we can use towards capital projects. So what we are anticipating tonight to kind of talk about are two big things that we're using the fund balance for. The first thing is the public safety communications. As you know, one of the five cities that were originally figured into the agreement has elected not to participate. So that increases the share for the other four cities. And our increased share is five hundred thousand dollars. So the total project cost that we are, that we, our share is two point five million dollars. One million dollars is already budgeted in this fiscal year. And we, so the remaining one point five million dollars will either have to be budgeted next fiscal year or we can split it up. And that's what we have proposed doing is splitting that cost in half, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars budgeting it in this fiscal year. And then the remaining of that will be budgeted next fiscal year. The remaining portion of the nine hundred seven thousand dollars that we're anticipating taking out of fund balance is to cover a, an operating transfer from the general fund into the capital projects fund. At the end of fiscal year two thousand twelve, you approved a budget amendment of two hundred seventy-one thousand dollars to be moved from the general fund into the capital projects fund to cover the architectural cost for the public safety building. And we ended up not doing this budget transfer just simply because at that time, we were moving forward with this project. We will be reimbursed, we will be reimbursed for these costs by debt issuance. And so we elected not to do the transfer with anticipation that the debt issuance that we were planning on doing, that would, it would cover the cost of that. Well, now we kind of put a halt on the process just because we're waiting to find out the, what local auction sales tax negotiations will mean for us. And so with that, it's just cleaner just go ahead and do that budget amendment or do that transfer from the general fund into the capital grant, or capital projects fund. So that's what the remaining portion of that is. Of course, the remaining portion between seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the public safety communications and the nine hundred seven thousand dollars that we are proposing taking out of fund balance is a hundred fifty-seven thousand. So two seventy-one of that, of course, a portion of that is being covered with revenues that were increased, and then a portion is coming out of fund balance. That make sense? So at the end of the fiscal year two thousand thirteen, the total fund balance will be about seven point one million dollars. So let's talk about revenue amendments. There are several revenue amendments that we have proposed. The main ones being an increase in property taxes by two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. And this is simply based on tax collection rates over the past few years. They were at ninety-six percent last fiscal year and ninety-six percent the previous fiscal year. And when I did the projections for this fiscal year, I used an eighty-three percent projection. So I'm proposing to increase that by two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars just to kind of bring it in line with, you know, what we really anticipate property tax collections to be this fiscal year. Franchise fees, we're proposing to increase those by one hundred thousand dollars, and that's based on collection rates over the past three years. Building permit revenues were increased by a hundred thousand dollars, and this is to account for higher-than-anticipated collections for this particular revenue source. We're seeing, we're seeing a pretty good bit of building permit revenues come through here. I think Kathy said we've got three hundred homes going up right now, or anticipated three hundred homes this year. So that's, that's, that's pretty substantial. And we are going to be using those funds to offset an software engineer that we'll talk about in just a little bit.
A hundred thousand, that's the gross, that's not the net after we pay safety.
That is, that is the net.
Oh, it is.
Court administration fees and fines and forfeitures combined were decreasing by a total of five hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that's based on a trend of lower than anticipated revenues.
Why is that? I mean, that's a pretty significant decrease. Are residents and visitors just behaving better? Or is there a reason for the fines and penalties going down?
I think a lot of that has to do with the environment that we're currently trying to operate in. You know, I try not to second-guess how the judge judges or how the court prosecutes and adjudicates. But what we're seeing is a lot of people that instead of, or in lieu of paying a fine or being offered community service, and we're seeing that being the emerging trend. I don't want to go so far as to, as to say we have an underperforming court or that it's not performing at the benchmarks that you set a court to perform at. And that's one of those hard things to do is to attach a dollar stream. Or to say we're going to hold you accountable to a certain revenue impact to the city. And that's not a correlation that we try to draw. We just try to hit the numbers as close as we can based on the history. And we've got some history that showed that the revenues in prior years were more than they're tracking at this year. So what I look at when I talk to the court is the fact that, you know, we've got, we've got a court that offers more community service than it does collecting fines at this point. There'll be some more information on that that I'd like to talk to you offline about rather than talking about it tonight.
Oh, will we open it up for questions?
Sure, absolutely.
So on the, taking the cost, increase cost for the participation in the radio, the new radio system. Would, you know, I don't want to anticipate anything, but I'm guessing that something's going to happen with the entity that pulled out, that they're going to get back in at some point in time. So is this, or what is the group discussed in terms of how they would let that happen? And would it cover, would it go back to cover the cost of the guys that had to pony up more money?
You know, to the extent that Johns Creek were to express some interest in becoming a part of the authority, I guess we'd have to consider it at that point. I mean, I, I wouldn't envision, as a voting member of the authority, what is created allowing them in on anything other than a subscription basis. And yeah, I think it's probably going to cost more later than it costs now. So that's the reality of it. And I don't know what decision they'll make or if they'll come back to the table, but I think that that viewpoint is shared by the other cities that are here.
So when you say subscription, on a subscription basis, I mean, they wouldn't be a member of the group that manages it? They'd just be a customer?
Buy-in on a per-radio basis.
Okay, so.
You know, those revenues.
Does that mean we would have a revenue source that we're not counting on right now? I mean, right now, we're not counting on our participation in that to be anything that generates revenue?
That's right. And potentially, those revenues are received in future years. You know, there's a couple of cities that are involved at this point. And I'll name one because I've heard him take this position in that Sandy Springs. Is that they're not now interested in even having those discussions with Johns Creek until the system is built and functioning. And, you know, they want to have those discussions next year, the year after that. If all of a sudden they're founded a quandary and they don't have any place to go other than to the authority, then maybe we'll have that discussion at that point. But I don't think that it would be the position, at least of a couple of the cities, right now to even try to have that conversation in the short term. Or we're more focused on getting the system up and running and functioning for our cities, and then we'll look at that later now. Again, I'm speaking as though I'm making those decisions for a group that I don't get to represent individually. So, you know, with the authority is, in the process of that legislation is being signed, hopefully this week by the governor, and then we'll bring some life into the authority. Then I can give you some more certainty as to what the direction is based on, how the votes of that, of that bottom. I don't, what I'm thinking, I think you're asking though is can we offset it with potential revenues in this budget year? Not, not, we can potentially offset revenues in future budget years, but I don't want to offset revenues in this budget year.
Actually, I wasn't worried about which budget year it occurs. What I was really interested in, is there any way for us to ever get this money back? Is what I was more interested in.
Oh, I think there's a, there's probably a fairly reasonable assumption that the extra that we're having to put in will be recoverable at some point.
Okay.
One other question. It was my understanding initially that the Johns Creek pulling out was only going to result in about two hundred thousand dollars more to us. And is it now five hundred thousand dollars more?
It's always been a sixteen million dollar total project cost. It's always going to cost not to exceed that. Based on our percentage, our percentage has not changed. We went from a fund, a total fund of what we thought to be one point nine million to where our total fund now is a cost not to exceed two point four. So it's not, it's not really the two five, it's not as big as two five, but it is as big as, as two four. And that's based on distributing the funds that, and I could, I could go get those if you want more detail, but distributing the funds that they were going to contribute to the system and having to pay for based upon the formula that was agreed upon in the IGA.
So are there any other questions about revenues at this point? I mean, I just kind of highlighted some of the major appropriation increases or decreases that we had. But you can see some of the smaller increases or decreases as you read throughout the document. And I'll just skip right on over those. And let's talk about expenditures. So as you highlight the expenditures, the first thing that I talk about in the budget document itself is an increase to the defined benefit plan, the percentage that we're increasing, I mean, that we're paying for each employee. Currently, we're paying five point three one percent to the pension plan for each employee. And based on some discussions from you and based on the presentations that we've had and, and some concerns that you've brought forth, we've heard that you would like to avoid some of the fluctuations in the future by leveling out the percentage that we contribute for each employee. And we spoke with our actuaries and learned that to do that, nine percent is probably about where we need to be contributing for each employee. You know, we, we talked about going from this point and going up, you know, as we, as we gradually increase each year and then eventually level off. So now we're starting up at a higher level and will hopefully decrease that over future years because we are funding it in advance. This also helps a new reporting requirement from Gatsby that's coming up. It's Gatsby sixty-eight, and this is a reporting requirement that says that every entity has to report liabilities and deferred revenues and all of that stuff for the pension plans. This is happening, it's going to be in place by June thirtieth. Those people that have June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen fiscal year-end dates. And so it will be then two thousand fifteen fiscal year-end that we have to start that reporting requirement. This is a, it affects the financial statements. And so that's why I wanted to bring it forth, is that increasing this funding now will greatly improve our financial status, at least to the eyes of the public, in the future because we do have to report those liabilities on our financial statements. We currently don't have to do that. We have to report the actuarial valuation of our, of our pension plan. But we, we don't have to actually put it in the financial statements themselves. So this is something new that's coming forth. I think there's going to be a lot of entities out there that are going to be looking unstable whenever you have to actually report that. But I think that with, with us increasing this funding level, we'll show that we have a financial stability.
So, so let me just see if I understood what you just said. We're putting more money into the program now to offset the future dollars that we would have had to put in. So we're just, we're just getting ahead of the game a little bit and allowing, you know, the time and interest to, to help fix future problems or future concerns.
Future concerns, yeah. And I think nine percent is probably the max that we'll pay in the future. I mean, it's just leveling it out, and then hopefully it'll decrease over time. But I think that that's pretty much, based on the consultant that we hired and based on the actuaries, that's, that's a level funding.
I think it's twice how you said, hopefully it'll decrease over time. What would be that situation that would cause it not to decrease over time?
It's a good question.
It would be if whatever it's invested in decreased significantly, it would cause us to have to increase our funding.
Yes.
Gotcha.
So this anticipates that we're going to remain with the defined benefit plan?
Correct. And we have studies that, that look at other cities and what they are contributing for their employees. And it is either in line or better than what they are contributing for their employees.
Do me a favor, just find out what that situation would be from a decrease standpoint? If, obviously, we have to keep the investments at a certain level where nothing would happen, but what, what is that situation where, when would we have to make a decision where we could not decrease that number? If you don't mind. Does that make sense? Do you understand that?
Mm-hmm.
Well, the. Yeah, I mean, the worst-case scenario is we're paying the amount on a regular basis to cover no proceeds from an account that was, that lost all its value.
Right.
I mean, because we're tied to these liabilities, period.
The city bears the burden of any risk associated with the market. That's, that's the way it is with the defined benefit plan. We bear the burden. Now, with your own 401K, 401K plan, the burden's all yours.
Right.
Okay, moving on. The appropriations for employee group insurance have decreased to reflect actual costs, resulting in savings of roughly sixty-five thousand. If you recall during our fiscal year thirteen budget discussions, when we were, when you were approving it, we discussed that we were aware that the group insurance was going to be lower than what we appropriated and that we were going to put those savings towards hiring an economic development manager, which is what we've done. We have Bill O'Connor on, on board. And this is basically just truing everything up and putting him in the budget as a, as a person, making, putting in his own department. There were several other personnel moves that have been made that I outlined here. I'm the finance director, me. I'm now the assistant city manager. And the assistant city manager costs were initially budgeted in the city manager's department. And so I'm just moving those from city manager over into the finance department. The human resources manager recently accepted a position with another city, not the director, but the manager. And that person was replaced with an administrative services manager who performs duties for both HR and finance. And that person came from the finance department. She was the payroll and AP clerk. So now I have a payroll and AP clerk position open. We have split that position to one part-time position in finance and one part-time position, basically in the special events fund, in the special events department. The person there was a part-time person. We've transitioned her into a full-time position.
Did you follow all that?
Did you?
Well, these require us to make, I know that the positions we have to actually approve. Will this require us to actually approve the changes in positions?
Clean it up with respect to making the titles work. I mean, what you've done here, all of the, even though this looks fancy on paper, it looks like a bunch of boxes moved around. It didn't net anything new into the organization. So, you know, it was, anytime you have somebody leave, at least it's my belief that you should look at your organization and say, okay, right now, we have an opportunity. If there's a desire, a need to do something different, now's the perfect time to do it. How can we deploy more efficiently? How can we be more effective? And that was the exercise we went through is, you know, once we had somebody leave, we said, okay, how can we now do it better? And this is, some of these moves is what resulted in, in doing it better. And we had some people in our organization that we had hired in certain roles that identified themselves as rising superstars. And when we have those kind of folks that identify themselves as capable of much more than what we hired them for, we were able to do some moving around and put those people round pegs and round holes. So the net effect of all of this is even though there's a bunch of boxes on paper that moved, and there was a bunch of boxes on paper that moved as we were trying to figure out what was the best deployment strategy, it doesn't net any, any new people, if that makes any sense.
Does it, how does it affect cost?
It was actually a reduction in cost. That was one of the things we looked at, is how can we be better, more efficient, faster, quicker? People in the right places, cheaper. I mean, you put all those things together, it seems to be kind of a, it becomes one of those, why wouldn't we?
There's also the community builder position is no longer being funded by the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities Grant Program. They have graduated us, so we are on our own. So if we continue to fund that position, we have to budget for it. And then a firefighter was transitioned into an EMS trainer position, leaving a vacancy on the fire shift. And that kind of subways into the next bullet point, which is.
Let me make the, let me make that one clear. That is the addition of one person. So I don't want you to think that I've made a blanket statement about the whole budget document. That fire position would be a newly created, a new, a net new, if we call it that, created position.
There's actually two additional positions. One is the software engineer and one is the firefighter to fill the vacancy that the EMS trainer left. With the software engineer, let's kind of talk about that for a minute. This is somebody that we have basically been living without since the beginning. In IT, our understanding is there's the hardware guy and there's a software guy. We have a hardware guy, he's a great hardware guy, thanks Dave. And, and we need a software guy. With, with, we have two systems, well, actually several systems. But the main system that is, is causing a lot of grief is the system in the community development department. It's a great system, but it's a great system. But it causes a lot of grief. But it's, it's a good system, but it's hard to get some information out of the system. And there's a lot of tweaking that has to be done to it to make it better for us. That make sense?
Yeah.
And we don't want to just throw the system away because it's a pretty costly system. So we want to make it work for us.
All right, so let me just sum that up real quick. We've got a system that's really, really good, but it costs us an arm and a leg. It's hard to get information out of. And so therefore, we need to add on a permanent resource to help us tame the dragon. Is that what you're saying?
Part of it, yes. But it's something we've always needed in-house.
Let me, let me, let me take a stab at this because I think it's something much more than that. Yes, we've got an assortment of software packages here that, that we have deployed that perform the functions of the day-to-day operations of our city. And they are capable of some pretty darn amazing things. If we are capable of accessing those amazing things from them. We have not ever in six years had anybody within our ranks that, that could take data that existed and through Crystal Reports, give us something that we could identify workload, identify trend with, something that we could make future decisions based upon. We've got all this data, and we're mining great data. But I want to be able to use it. I want to be able to say, you know, what is code, what does code enforcement, their activities look like on a daily, weekly, monthly basis? How does that track versus last year? How is that tracking by different geography, geographic parts of the city? You know, what do all those things, what do all those things look like? You know, frankly, we've got some pretty robust systems, and I'd like to get some value out of them. We've been issuing ten times more building permits, it seems here lately, than we've been issuing in prior years. And there's some, there's something to be learned from that, to be able to make better decisions. There's also something, to Stacy's point, there's also something to be said for those who are the end users who we are tasking with sitting in front of a computer screen every day and making this thing, these, these, these things that we buy to help add to our business efficiency. There's something to be said that when those people are living in daily pain because it just won't work the way it's supposed to work. You know, what I find that we do is we end up creating workarounds on the fly. And workarounds on the fly, to some degree, work because they get you to where you need to be. The permit's going to come out of the printer or the business license is going to issue. But there's pieces that are left out when you start to work around stuff. So this goes back, gosh, several, several, several months, almost six months ago, maybe even longer than that, eight months. And the number one software we were having a problem with, I said, guys, you got to help me understand this because we're having way more problems than I think is practical or reasonable out of a software program. And, you know, they had a users conference that happened to assemble down at the Georgia Tech Conference Center downtown. And I, I went to that, and I went not for the purpose of me trying to figure out how to use our software program, because I wanted to go find people that were happy with it. Because I figured if I could go find people that were happy with it, I could ask them why they were happy. And then I could go down there and I could find people that were unhappy with it, and then I could find out why they were unhappy. And I could try to go find these people who were having a different experience with the system than we were to try to learn what they had in place that was allowing them to enjoy some success. It became very apparent very quickly that the ones that were successful, and I mean, there were some that were very successful in, in using it. The thing that made them successful was the, to, to have somebody quicker than a log me in session, that by the way, is the way you fix these things, but it takes us down from being able to, this is the customers that are in the lobby at the time. They, you know, tech support people log in and start to look at screens and try to fix stuff from remote, remote locations. We're just, you know, we're, we're, number one, we're not utilizing it the way I think it's capable of being utilized. Number two, I'm seeing a lot of pain in people's faces who are, who have this tool at their disposal. It simply doesn't work. Now, you might say, okay, let's just scrap it and let's go find one that works. You know, we've looked at that too. And I don't know that as, as software is designed these days, you know, it seems as though it's designed, it's pushed into the market quick, and then at some point, they'll fix it. And, you know, we create a patch. Well, all the patch does is break something else. So, you know, you get, oh, let's go and update six point four. Well, all that does is break update six point three. And we're really kind of operating on the fly when it comes to this stuff and relying on people that take a good bit of time to get to and take us offline. So, you know, this is something that I, I think has value to Milton, something that was, has enough value that I'm ready to bring it forward and, and say, you know, I think that for the modest investment that we would have in a, a software-type expert, we would see a tremendous return on that in being able to use our data, keep us up and running, and actually keeping us running at a level I think we're capable of.
Do you have a person in mind?
I do. And the only reason I, I say that is, you know, when I went to try to find the, the happy people and the unhappy people, very candidly, I went to, went to one of the groups and said, Joe, I want to hire your superstar. I mean, I want to, I want the person that can make, that can make Milton the shining star and make it work. And, you know, it's been a little bit of back-and-forth discussion, but I think that to the extent that would fund, we'd, we'd, we would find the round peg for the round hole.
So, Chris, I mean, what you're describing is the, the everyday life of people that sell and use software as part of their business, and it's hard to find a business that doesn't use software. But you described two different things. The first thing was you wanted to use information that the products that you guys use are generating that you haven't figured out how to leverage yet. So, so there was an analytics, a business intelligence piece of what you mentioned. And then two minutes later, you started talking about software that wasn't working, and you had customers sitting in the lobby waiting for something to work. That's a completely different problem. You don't hire people to fix software internally. You call up your software vendor and you say, hey, this thing doesn't work. And I pay you guys a lot of money on a regular basis to make sure that it does work. And if they can't fix the problem in a reasonable amount of time and without breaking sixteen other things when they fix that one. And if they can't fix the problem in a reasonable amount of time and without breaking sixteen other things when they fix that one thing, that's really the time you have to go out and find a new vendor. Because if, if you're in business with a vendor who can't respond to your needs, that's just not a healthy relationship kind of thing.
Understand.
So, so what, which is it really?
Well, it's really both. But it's, it's really both, you know, taking the analytics side apart, you know, let's put that one aside. Because that, that, that's something that we need to do because we need to be able to, if we're going to collect data, we need to be able to use it. Otherwise, there's no sense in collecting it. It's just, we, we mine it and it sits in a, in a sequel spreadsheet and, you know, I'm speaking now Spanish. I don't even know what that means. But as far, with, with respect to keeping us up and running, the software system that we have is one of these that we send people to become trained in the software to be able to make enhancements and modifications locally. And, yeah, yeah. And, you know, when we do that, then we get a reduction in the price of the monthly maintenance, which reduces the annual maintenance cost of the software. But I, I've, I've sent three people to that training and it's reasonably high-level, technical, computer speak. And yes, can we call the 800 number? Can we get somebody to log in for an hour and fix our problem? Sure. Yes, we can. But that, that creates some pretty tremendous inefficiencies in, in the workplace. Now, you know, the other option would be to explore going a different direction and saying, you know, the software, but this, this isn't going to work anymore. But I've seen examples of it work and be highly effective. And before we take a fairly costly software program and just say, we're going to different, you know, too, too bad, so say, let's go a different direction, I want to make sure that we've at least given this one the opportunity to, to succeed.
Well, yeah, I, we don't need to get into the details right now, but I mean, you know, you're, this is what I do every day. That's why I have, you know, a pretty deep opinion about what's right and what's wrong when it comes to customer, software vendor relationships and what the product should be expected to do, that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I'd love to sit down and talk to you a little more detail about it and give you some ideas on how to, you know, whip your software vendor into shape, so.
I've made it to the top of the company and it's a reasonably large company. But I made it a, a, a practice, or I made it a mission to see if I could, to see if I could get all the way to the, to the top of the co- you know, ironically, it's internationally delivered product that happens to be headquartered in Duluth. And I said, if I can't get service and you're two towns over, how am I getting service if I'm in Ottawa? Right? So, I'd be, I'd be happy to sit down and chat with you about it and maybe, you know, work some thought process a little bit.
What kind of investment are we talking about for, for a resource that would have, you know, the capability to master all of the products that we use? Is it? We don't want to talk, what, what kind of investment are we talking about? What, how's this going to impact our budget?
Software engineer, you're talking about.
You don't have to give me the exact number, but I mean, what scale are we talking about? Is it a part-time thing? Is it a full-time?
No, I, because I, I really think to do it right, we'd be, we would use it cross, cross-citywide, you know, and, and, and even be able to potentially report more in our public cyberspace than we're reporting today. I mean...
How does this impact the intergovernmental agreement that we have with Johns Creek? Is there something we can, I mean, they use all the same systems we use.
No, they don't.
They don't?
No, they don't.
Do they use this system?
They do not.
They don't?
The, the, the unique thing about this system is when we awarded the bid, we had an internal expert on it. And her name was Lynn Tully, right? So, the reason none of this got brought up before is we had somebody who chose the vendor, who had used it in a prior application. And, you know, our, our knowledge base on keeping it doing what it did when Lynn was here, left with Lynn.
So, what's Kathleen got expertise in?
Email.
All right. I see where that's going.
So...
Well, we can pick that up offline.
Okay, moving on to the next item that I highlighted was $75,000. We're putting that in the budget to cover the costs associated with cleanup with the Justin Adams property. This is what we capped it at.
And as I understand it, a lien will be placed on his property for that amount, so eventually...
Eventually, we'll get the money. We'll get the bet.
$75,000 just to clean it up?
Have you, have we gotten any, I mean, is that just Carter's estimate or have you been able to get any takers?
I think, and I think the number's bigger than that. You know, it's been an interesting one. We're, we're trying to figure out exactly how to bid those services and we're, we're going through that process right now. You're going to see the bid release. The problem with that is that we released the bid, we qualify some vendors, we even invite them to go on a tour of the locations so they know what they're bidding on. And that changes within every 24 hours. So, if we have them bid on something tomorrow, by the weekend, Justin's done something out there. I mean, the, the, the big thing of, of this week is hauling in asphalt because he's going to create a road. So, you know, the, the conditions on the property change daily. And that's the one I'm struggling with, is how do we have them bid on something that I can't guarantee is going to look the same?
We can't get the, the court can't issue something to prevent him from making any changes to the property without their approval?
At this point, at this point, the court has ruled and getting this order, I think the council may be aware, was a labor of love. And, you know, from the court's perspective, this is just not the highest priority on the court's calendar. And so, quite frankly, Councilmember Thurmond, we have resisted going back to the court because Mr. Adams does, in fact, he will participate and it will make this another six-month, eight-month, nine-month legal ordeal. The city manager and I have had some discussions with respect to this, this entire issue and may want to in fact speak with the council as, as a body with respect to some additional action we may need to take. Because, you know, we have concerns as well, talking about spending some money out there and what will be the, the result of that. The order was to bring the property up to code compliance. We can do that, but then it can become uncode compliant again after we do it.
I'm sure it will.
You talk about code compliance. That's just what you can see, though, right? From photographs, you can't see anything internal to the structure.
Just what the city manager, well, okay, and, and we're not even, we're going to stay on the periphery of the structure. That's not even implicated by this order and that's another matter altogether, is that there are concerns with the effect of the structure as well.
The court order doesn't give us any.
So, this is nothing more than a placeholder. I mean, base, I mean, somewhat educated placeholder.
Somewhat educated placeholder, but also so that when we go to bid, that we put some kind of a bookend in there so that, you know, all of a sudden, you go to bid on a cleanup of a project. And, you know, so if you publish that it's a $150,000 not to exceed project, guess what? It's a $150,000 project. Or you put in it's the cost not to exceed $250,000, it's a $250,000 project.
Do it time and material.
We're gonna do, yeah, we're thinking time and material, potentially wait. There's got to be something, because we don't know.
But Chris, I mean, we're saying that we're going to get reimbursed at the point in time the property's sold. We're creating a lien on the property. We could create a lien that would prohibit the sale of the property and then we'd never get our money back.
Yes.
Agreed.
That's why we have to expense it right now.
Yeah, so...
Do we know what the value of the property is and what other liens there may be on the property?
There are no other liens.
There are no other liens?
We would be the first lien holder.
Okay, that's good.
We need to do a title search. As far as value, I wouldn't pay 10 cents for it.
Right now.
So, $75,000 and 10 cents would be right out?
I mean, obviously, it's got, it's got value as raw land in Milton, Georgia.
How many acres is it?
Just south of five, yeah.
So, if you place a lien on it and it never sells, is there any time that the, the lien is called or anything? I mean, at some point, it has to transfer title somehow, I mean, upon death or something.
That's right. We could, we could anticipate a sale at some point, perhaps as part of the estate, the, the winding up of the estate. But again, I think, you know, we're, they could be talking 10 years from now. We just have to be mindful of that. It's not a satisfactory resolution with respect to making Milton whole at all.
But the real challenge is we spend the money and in that timeframe that you just talked about, the 10-year horizon, it, it, all the work is undone and we really never made any progress.
And, and the city manager and we have had that discussion ad infinitum. It is a, it is a big concern.
Problem is, is we have an enforcement order of the court that gives us the authority to go out and bring it into code compliance. And we have Milton citizens en masse that are expecting us to exercise the discretion and authority we have with the order that the court gave us.
They have been, they have been long-suffering and they are frustrated at the lack of action. We've attempted to explain to them that it's not as easy as just us taking staff and going and picking up pick-hose and going out there and working. It's much more complicated than that, but it's frustrating to them.
So, a question. How soon after we take bids on the project can we actually occupy or gain entry to the site?
We have to, the, the court requires that we provide a 24-hour notice.
24? Well, conceivably, if you're putting a price together, you'd, you'd look at the site a couple, or at least no later than a day or two before you put a price on it, submit the bid. Can you award it within a day or two days?
I don't believe our purchasing policies will allow us to act that way. We'd have to, we'd have to choreograph a meeting and, I mean, we, we potentially, I guess, could do all that. We can put a bunch of pieces together to make that happen.
Can we pay for him to go on vacation for the time it takes between we awarded and the time we can start? It might be cheaper.
Well, I guess my point is if you've got a budget of 75 here, prices come in at 60, for example. Even if it takes a week or two weeks to award it, is he going to bring in $50,000, or $15,000 more material? It's a gamble, I guess, no matter which way you go.
Right. And then the thing that we don't know is, is what's out there that we don't know.
True.
I mean, we, we know that there are barrels with something in it that's liquid. We've seen them. But we don't know what is in the barrels. And we took the Georgia EPD out there with us and at that point, we didn't have the authority of the court. We had, you know, just typical authority that anybody can have by consenting to us being there. And we were out there with Georgia EPD and said, Mr. Adams, we'd like to have EPD look at these barrels that are out here that have liquid in it. And at that point, we didn't have the authority of the court and, and he said, do I have to let you out here? And the candid answer to that is no. I mean, everybody has protections under the Fourth Amendment. And he said, I want you here. So...
Can we do that exercise again now that we have?
We can, but EPD's policy, now that they've been asked to leave a property, is we have to now officially go find it and have it be suspicious and then we can call them out to evaluate it.
Which of course implicates the cost because if our private entities wanting to be pre-qualified on this, go out to the property, identify things they believe are hazardous substances, that could insert a whole different element into this cleanup.
And we'll be out there tomorrow morning issuing a stop-work order on him taking out some trees today because he's building this road which he's not permitted or entitled to build. So, we're, we're going to have another parallel involvement with it beginning tomorrow morning.
We're, we're not pushing a bad situation into a worse one with this strategy.
I don't know what a better strategy is.
Yeah, no, I, without getting specific, it has just been, you know, recent situations in neighboring cities that I would hate to see happen in Milton.
Oh, yeah, I, I would too. You know, we, we've, we've had those discussions and we'll take the right precautions. But, yeah, this isn't a fight we went looking for. It's one that found us and it found us with a pro se defendant. And whenever you have one of those, which is, you know, him representing himself, the court has been awfully gracious in a pro se defendant in some of the latitude that he's been given. That if he had been represented by counsel, he might not have had.
It is fair. Give me a lawyer any day, any day on the other side.
Is what he's doing now in contempt of the court order?
No, I don't think what he's doing now is in contempt of the court order because the court's not going to order him to obey the code. The court will assume that people are going to obey the law. We, really, until we go out and begin to clean up the property and then see what next steps he takes, we could literally begin, start this process all over again. And, and that's where I may make a recommendation to the city manager that we try maybe another approach on the next go-around.
That was not nearly as attractive, though, so we need to try this sort of version and see if it works.
Agreed.
Are you ready to move on?
No, I'm not.
Oh, my note. So, the next part of the budget amendments is basically going through each and every department and to discuss each of the budget amendments. And I'll just kind of glance over these. Most of these we've already discussed. So, we'll start with the city manager's department. As we've already discussed, pension is increasing for the, to the 9% level. Professional fees are increasing to cover the cost of the best practices studied performed by ICMA. This is $11,000. We're decreasing the salaries and wages to, for the assistant city manager, moving that into the finance department. And then group insurance is decreasing as well to reflect actual cost. In the city clerk's department, the records clerk moved from the city clerk's department into the HR department. And so, this is moving funds, her salaries and wages over into the HR department. Pension, of course, increased. Group insurance decreased. And then Sudi is not attending the GMA Annual Conference this year because she's already achieved her training for her city clerk certification. In the finance department...
I wanted you to go to that one.
Yes. In the finance department, as already mentioned, the assistant city manager's salary is moving into the finance department. Pension increased, group insurance decreased, and audit fees decreased to reflect actual costs. In the IT department, this is where we are accounting for the cost for, associated with the software engineer. For the remainder of this year, we're anticipating $44,240. In the HR department, this is simply moving the records clerk from the city clerk's department into this department.
Yeah, sorry.
Sure.
$44,240 is, is the net increase?
Yes.
Had we already captured some of the costs related to this? Because that doesn't sound like enough to me.
That's for the remainder of this year.
Oh, okay. All right. Got it.
As mentioned, in the HR department, we are moving records clerk in here in the salaries and wages and then increasing the pension. Public information department, this is, we're increasing the salary to account for the transition of the special events coordinator from part-time to full-time. And we're also accounting for the community builder's salary in this department as well. And then pension increased. In the municipal court department, pension increased, group insurance decreased. In the police department, there's several changes here. Pension increased, unemployment insurance increased slightly just because the rate increased from 0.4% to 0.64%. And that's actually across the board. Facilities repair and maintenance increased due to unanticipated cost of rekeying the doors throughout the station due to security reasons. Vehicles repairs and maintenance, and this is offset with insurance proceeds. Same thing with education and training for the RAD program, offset with donations received. And then the 800 megahertz fees to Fulton County, these fees are higher than anticipated. The AFAS circuit, this is associated with a new fingerprinting system and this is cost for the circuit. Golf tournament supplies are offset with donations received and crime prevention materials also offset with a donation received from the Public Safety Fund and group insurance decreased. In the fire department, salaries and wages increased to cover the cost of the new firefighter, filling the vacancy left by the EMS trainer. And with the SAFER grant, the ending, the end of the reporting period for that ends in June or July of this year. And when I budgeted for these positions, these three firefighters, I, I budgeted for their, their full salaries in the operating grant fund, which is where we have to report any kind of grant-funded projects or people. And since the reporting period for the SAFER grant ends in June of this year, we have the last quarter that we actually need to report in the general fund for these salaries. And so, basically, it's moving salaries over from operating grant fund into the general fund. Then general supplies for suppression and prevention, both of those have increased. One is offset with donations received for the fireworks ceremony. And then the other is purchasing AEDs for new police vehicles. And then group insurance decreased. And I think I'm going to move the AEDs for police vehicles over to the police department. We put it in the fire department. put it in the fire department because that's where we initially discussed taking it out of when we talked about MNO initiatives. We talked about funding them out of some funds in the fire department. And so, I'm gonna move that into the police department. You'll see that new document come forward on Monday. In the public works department, increasing pension, increasing the unemployment insurance. Professional fees, we increased to cover costs associated with cleaning up the Adams property, of course, at the seventy-five thousand dollars. Other purchase services, we're increasing the cost there. It's offset with insurance proceeds received for guard rail damage.
And the seventy-five thousand goes into the operating fund and not into any kind of other capital improvements fund or anything? It's, since we don't own the property, or is that what?
You know, it was, it was a really, I, I discussed this with our auditors, trying to figure out where to put it. Because in initial discussion, if, if the property were to sell, you know, within the receivable, you know, foreseeable future, we could probably put it in as a receivable. But since we're, you know, likely won't receive this money within the next, like we've heard, ten years, we need to go ahead and expense it because we can't carry something like that on our books for ten years. So, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna come out of the general fund either way. I mean, it's, it's, but just reporting it into the department, so it's, it could be reporting in, in general fund, public works department, it could be reported in the capital projects.
It just seems like to me, hopefully, it's a kind of a one-time expenses and most of those don't get put here. They get put into the capital projects or somewhere else like that, rather than being, because I think of the stuff here as being more ongoing expenses. And maybe this is going to be an ongoing expense, but I'd like to think optimistically it won't be.
I can talk to the auditors again to see, you know, what they, what they recommend. The capital projects fund is, is truly for acquiring property or improving the assets that we have. You know, so it's, it's kind of hard to, to put this in the capital projects fund. So, it, you know, I'll, I'll talk it over with him again and see what he recommends. And then infrastructure sign materials, that's offset with proceeds from selling recycled signs or recycling signs. And then group insurance decreased. In the parks and recreation department, pension increased, unemployment insurance increased. We put in some funds, twenty-five hundred dollars for the rental cost for a temporary senior servicing center. And this is basically half the cost. We're splitting it with North Fulton Senior Services, that's the name of it. And then group insurance decreased. In the community development department, pension increased, unemployment insurance increased. There's several professional fees that Kathy requested here. Facilitation services for Route Nine North Corridor Study, that's in the cost of ten thousand dollars. We talked about that at the last meeting. That's the cost not to exceed ten thousand dollars. Then twenty-five hundred dollars for an amendment to the Tunnel Spangler and Welsh, Welsh contract for Deerfield service, FBC services. Ten thousand dollars for a contract with Tunnel Spangler Welsh for FBC services for Route Nine North Corridor Study. And a one thousand dollars for a survey for the Crab Apple Historic District. Vehicles repairs and maintenance increased by two thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. And this is offset with insurance proceeds for damaged vehicle. And then group insurance decreased. Economic development, this is the brand-new department that we've created to capture the costs associated with economic development manager. Other finances, financing uses, this is operating transfers out to the different funds. We're transferring out to the capital projects fund for nine hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-one dollars. And we've already discussed what that's for. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the public safety radio communication system and two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars for the operating transfer to cover the cost of the architectural services for the public safety commu-, public safety facility. And then there's a difference there between those two, and that's offset with some revenues in the capital projects fund. The capital grant fund, we're transferring money into it to cover construction costs for the Deerfield at Morris Intersection Project, and I'll kind of cover that in just a moment. And then we're decreasing the operating transfer in, into the operating grant fund, and I'll cover that in just a moment as well. Contingency is increasing, and this is basically to meet the budgetary policy requirement. We're required to have a one percent contingency in the budget. And so, because of the budget amendments that we're presenting today, it increased the contingency amount that we have to put in there. In the operating grant fund, we are decreasing, see, we're increasing the revenues for the mini-grants to account for revenues that we received for the, for this, from this program. And then increasing the amount for, this is from GMA, this is for the, what did I say? Grant revenues associated with AFIS system that we currently have. And then we're decreasing the operating transfer in from the general fund. And that operating transfer basically is decreased because we are no longer receiving funding for the community builder person in the mini-grant program. And so, we're having to take those costs out of the budget. And then we're decreasing the SAFER grant employees. I already talked about that. In the capital projects fund, the revenues that are increasing are traffic calm, let's see, Crab Apple Paving Fund, Traffic Calming, and True Recompense. And those are offset with the appropriate expense accounts. We're also increasing insurance proceeds in the public safety fund, and this is for a damaged vehicle. We, it was for a totaled vehicle and we replaced it with a new vehicle. And we've already talked about the operating transfer, kind of briefly going through the different departments. And in the police department, we've already discussed the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the public safety communication system. And then that ten thousand one fifty-four for vehicle replacement reserve, this is offset with that insurance proceeds that I just discussed. In the public works department, you'll see a decrease in two accounts there, one in pavement management and one in bridge replacement. And these are to offset, or these are moving funds from the capital projects fund into the capital grant fund to cover costs associated with the Deerfield at Morris Road Intersection Improvement Project. We received some funds from LMIC to cover the cost, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars that we received from LMIC. And then we have a twenty percent match for that, which is what you see coming out of the pavement management fund. And then the remaining balance for that cost of that project, we're taking it out of the bridge replacement account, fifty-one thousand dollars, and moving it all over into the capital grant fund. We already talked about twenty-one hundred dollars for Crab Apple Paving, that's offset with revenues as, as well as traffic calming. And then the twenty-five hundred dollars in true recompense is also offset with revenues. Any questions for the capital projects fund? And then all of the, all of the amendments that you see in the revenues for the capital grant fund is basically just, we've already had budgeted three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we were gonna receive in revenue, that we anticipated receiving in revenues for the Deerfield at Morris Project. We only received two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, a little over that. And then we're offsetting that with those budget amendments that I just discussed. That concludes the budget amendments. Questions?
Last year when we formed this budget, we allocated some funds for entry signage for the city. Is that still in here?
It is. It's under branding and signage, under the capital grant fund, fifty thousand dollars. To the very last page.
One other question.
Okay.
I know you're recognizing the savings in the health insurance this year, up until September. When's the renewal date on insurance?
October one is whenever our new plan year starts. It's, it nears our fiscal year.
Fiscal year. I know it makes good sense to recognize the savings now, but where you anticipate at renewal time, given the current climate of health insurance in the United States here, what do you see coming forward next year on renewal?
That is a good question for our HR director. Sorry.
I think, I think you have a very valid point. Everything I've read showing anywhere from ten percent to close to twenty percent increases. But right now, we're out to bid for a new insurance, or for insurance brokers. And looking at seeing what different brokers can bring to us in this time. Maybe the same look or broker will, I anticipate they'll bid. But also what other places are looking at. So, we're on top of this and realize what might be potentially coming as far as our increases. We have a fantastic health plan for our employees, but know that this is out there. It has our renewal approaches in October. We, we dodged the bullet last year on renewal. We were after the deadline. But everything that I have read shows considerable increases. And that's what everybody's anticipating. But we're trying to be proactive and looking at what our options are through a brokered as we go out to bid.
What is the total increase due to the change in our funding strategy for the pension plan? Do you know? I didn't have a calculator with me to add up all the numbers from each little department.
Well, the total increase for the remainder of this year, I believe, was one hundred and fourteen thousand dollars.
So, we're talking about about two hundred and thirty thousand dollar per year increase based, to our bottom, increase in pension costs based on our change in philosophy of funding more of it upfront?
If you use the funding strategy that we have right now, yes. And, and use the, the funding level at five point three one percent, two hundred and thirty thousand, whatever it is that you said, yes. Absolutely.
We did get our actuarial report in for the plan year. It starts October first. At a minimum funding that's required by GMA, the funding went from five point three one percent to five point eight percent, which would have caused the rates to go from two hundred and eighty-nine thousand to three hundred and forty-two thousand for next fiscal year. What we're anticipating, if we funded at nine percent for that even level, it would go to five twenty-seven. So, it's actually about a hundred and eighty-five thousand extra for FY fourteen.
So, it really, though, is almost three hundred thousand more than what we funded originally in our budget.
Your two thirty-eight is the right number. And that was what I calculated. Right now, we're paying about two eighty-nine is what our current funding level is at five point three one. So, and scheduled to jump to three forty-two. And ultimately, if we go at nine percent, it's to five twenty-seven.
Any other questions?
I did have one question, but Carter is not here, is he? Because I was gonna say, I know we put some money into sidewalk funds. Are we gonna spend that before the end of the year, try to get some sidewalks in?
Yes, yes. They're in the progress doing that right now.
Okay. Because I know that those are the, those are the things that, that people see and make a difference in their everyday lives in Milton, if we could get some sidewalks, gaps closed.
I agree. And forgive us, we're trying to, because the whole discussion we just had about the particular house in Milton, we just got where the tree has landed on it. So, we're trying to figure out what to do.
On the house?
Are you serious?
Yes, I am. So, that's why...
Was this a tree that...
Quit talking about it. Might as well have more to clean up.
Is, is this a tree that nature helped land on it, or that he landed on it?
That he landed on it, so.
That could be a blessing in disguise, you can't hold up. If no one was hurt. But nobody, nobody was hurt in it, were they?
I, I don't, I, I hope not.
Any other questions regarding the budget? Moving on.
We have no public comments for item two, discussion of RZ thirteen oh eight, to adopt a new use permit within Article Nine, Division Five, miscellaneous uses, Section sixty-four one eight four zero, barns or riding areas. Ms. Robin McDonald.
That was a very exciting work discussion on the budget there. So, hopefully, we can get out of here. So, I said in the... Well, I said in the agenda review meeting, I said, poor Stacy has to sit through all our zoning stuff. So, it was our turn to sit through a budget discussion. So, so we know what it feels like. So, we're really gonna discuss these two items together, RZ thirteen oh eight and oh nine. As you remember, you approved a text amendment to the AG one district as it pertained to the location of barns at your March nineteenth, two thousand, two thousand and twelve meeting. And for certain situations, barns and riding areas are required to obtain a use permit from the city council. And that's all well and good, but we did not have a use permit for it. So, why, that's why we're before you today and ultimately on the twenty-second for your consideration. The first text amendment, RZ thirteen oh eight, is the new use permit for barns or riding areas. I've also included in your packet, it should be the first item, a copy of the AG one district that highlights the situations in which a use permit is required. Again, this does not, this is not codified with the latest fencing. So, if you think, what about those fencing things we just did? This is not codified through that date. But it does pertain to the barns and riding areas. And unless you want me to go into that detail, I will. But you can read which situations require it. So, if we go to the first, first item, RZ thirteen oh eight, which is the barns or riding areas, it's in red because this is a new section, brand new. Again, it's only gonna be required, and we're only talking about barns and riding areas in AG one. So, as required in Section sixty-four four fifteen, which is what that handout is. And I won't go through each of the standards, but they're fairly similar to other use permits that we've, we've done. A seventy-five foot setback for parking when a principal structure is a riding area, when you would have events at such a place if that might happen. We go, we talk about the hours of operation, just talk about the height because a riding area or barn, really the barn or structure over the riding area isn't addressed in the AG one district standards. And that's, the height of a building is forty feet. And again, loudspeakers and public address systems are prohibited. Now, if for some reason somebody wants that, they can ask for a variance to it if there was a need for it. Again, also, sound levels adjacent to AG one or single-family districts. And when lighting is utilized, it has to conform to our lighting requirements of the zoning ordinance. So, this has all been vetted through also with the planning commission and includes, they did a couple little tweaks, nothing major. The second item is, obviously, when we're dealing with a, a specific use permit, we wanna define what that particular thing is. So, barn is pretty straightforward, means a structure housing livestock. The word livestock is used within the AG one district and it would just be defined through dictionary. Riding area means an area utilized for equestrian purposes, including practice sessions, shows, et cetera, which may or may not be covered or with, or with or without designated seating structures. So, again, just trying to make a definition of what a riding area is. We're trying to be as general as possible, but still be able to pinpoint what is a riding area. So, with that said, I'm open to any questions or suggestions on these two text amendments. Yes?
The only question I have is from a barn perspective. I mean, does there have to be livestock in the barn?
Well, that's an interesting question because the ordinance states that any structures housing animals have to be a hundred feet away. So, we do actually, you know, it's hard to enforce that. But if, when somebody comes to our department and says, I wanna build a structure, I wanna build a barn, I say, are you gonna put animals in it? Because sometimes people do a accessory structure for storage that looks like a barn.
Sure.
So, we're not gonna make them put it a hundred feet away. Now, ten years from now, if somebody buys a structure and puts animals in it, it's really hard for us to enforce that. But when somebody comes with a new building, we do differentiate between what we would consider an accessory structure in a barn that houses animals. So, yes.
I know that we have had a force council that helped in a lot of this stuff. Have they been consulted as far as their thoughts on... they been consulted as far as their thoughts on these two?
Not on these specific ones. They were consulted on the previous.
I think it's important that.
We get their input.
Yeah, we get their input just to make sure that the forty-foot, I mean, there may be some kind of standard for barns at forty-two rather than forty feet. We need to know that before we.
That's fine. I can get ahold of them. And I can let you know if there's any updates for next week's meeting. Yes?
Comment on, again, the definition of a barn. A lot of barns that I've been familiar with are solely used for storing hay or grain or.
And so, in, again, this situation, we're, because the health department and different codes require a hundred feet of structures housing animals be a hundred feet away, that's how we're kind of defining a barn, truly as something with animals in it, livestock. So, we don't really care if they have a bunch of grain in it, and it's twenty-five feet away, because it doesn't typically stink or, you know, make noise or whatever. So, anyway.
You mentioned that the planning commission had made some tweaks in this. Are they all included?
Yes, they're already included. They're very, very minor, just with the timing and the height. We just clarified the height and then the timing of being open. So, that, this reflects their changes.
Got you.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
If not, I will definitely look into that, talk to.
I just think it's good to get their input beforehand. So.
Right. That's a great point. And I will reach out to them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else want to report in? If that's the case.
I survived another year.
Yeah.
That's over.
Meeting adjourned.